Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, October 20, 2021. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 Lake Street, West Lake Street, excuse me, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are counselors Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, Joel Aspiral, Kate McCallister, and Andy Groot. Councilman John Darling is absent. Will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of announcements for tonight. First is it's leaf pickup time. They're dropping quickly. And it started raining, so it means it's leave pickup time for us again, because that seems to happen every year. And this year, we are actually going to be doing leaf pickup during two weeks. So commonly what happens is we have a week of leaf pickup. It's historically what we've done, and then more leaves drop after, and the public has been wondering, is there going to be a second leaf pickup? So this year, in response to input we've had, we've decided we're going to have two weeks of leaf pickup. So the first week will be next week, so the 25th through the 29th. So a reminder to residents that they need to place unbaked leaves in the street next to the curb. And they should have those out by Sunday for pickup. So our crews will get through the whole city next week. And but have them out by Monday to make sure yours make it, because they may have been in your area Monday. And if your leaves are out on Thursday, they're not getting picked up next week. We will have a second week that will be the week of November 14th. So if people either don't make next week, or if they have more leaves dropping and want a second pickup, our second citywide pickup will be the week of November 14th. So that's what I have on leaf pickup. Second announcement, our remodel at City Hall, we are just working through final cleanup punch list items. And staff started moving over to the second floor or the first floor over in our other building tonight. And we will be moving everyone through today through Friday, Monday, City Hall. All services will resume on the first floor at our main entrance. And that will mean services for all city departments and divisions. So police, fire, building, planning, parks, general administration. Everything is on the first floor now of the of our main entrance building. So we have our staff representing all divisions that will be sitting up there. You see staff when you come into the door. We have public ADA accessible restrooms on the first floor. ADA accessibility has been addressed throughout the whole building. And just a reminder that this project was a customer service remodel on the first floor. It was a, there was a project in the fire bay to reinforce some structural issues in our fire bay and ensure that if we had a major earthquake, we had something significant. Our fire station is standing and our fire trucks can get out. So that was a significant part of this project. In addition to that, we did every placement of our HVAC system citywide so that we could comply with the new ash rate HVAC recommendations around air flow and and circulation of clean air, seven to eight times an hour in accordance with the recommendations for safe buildings and best practices for COVID. So that is City Hall wide now. So in all of our staff areas, fire living quarters over in police, as well as here in council chambers. So all of that's complete, and we're excited to be reopening on Monday in the first floor. So we invite the public to come in. Kiosk will be back there. And I think you'll find, again, it's one stop shopping for customer service. Everything is in one area of the city. And that will mean we're cross-training too. So in times where we have the snow hotline going, we're doing a lot of snow removal. And people are calling in on the snow hotline instead of getting a recording. We will be roaming calls, and you will be talking to a member of city staff on calling in on those emergency lines during the day. So.
That's great.
Finally, our last update is related to parks. We have a Parks Workshop that will be here at City Hall tomorrow evening. So want to remind the public. And we have another workshop on Friday. And we have a couple new renderings based on public feedback for downtown waterfront as well as city beach. So I'll hand it over to Maeve to talk a little bit more about the upcoming workshops, what people could expect at the open house workshop tomorrow night, as well as city beach on Friday, and also pull-up renderings. So council can take a quick look at that, and we'll be pushing those out tonight as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, everyone, Mayor and council people. I'm so excited to tell you about tomorrow night. It's going to be the first time that we've had people in the city since COVID started for a workshop. And we're going to safely have stations throughout for each of the areas that we're going to be covering. The parks that we'll be talking about, and we'll have a station for include the city beach, and then the Sand Creek Downtown Waterfront, and then Traverse Centennial Sports Complex. We'll also have someone on staff who can talk about the sidewalks as well. So you'll have the park staff there as well as some folks from the other team. And it's going to be a really fun night to invite everyone, all the neighbors, to come and share their feedback and really dive into what these projects look like. And then we're going to continue these walking workshops as well. And just a reminder that these are all building up to my winter planning design. So even if we don't get the lot tax, I want to make it clear that these projects are continuing no matter what. The lot tax, as we all have heard now, and probably exhaustedly so, the lot tax will be critical if if we get it to moving quickly. But these projects are moving no matter what. So I want people to come with their ideas and their input. These are concepts that were all adopted in the Parkmaster Plan last year. And for for the last six weeks or so, I've been hearing from the public, and we were able to already start to incorporate some of the feedback. In this illustration, you can see on the board, this is again just a rendering. So it's a concept. It's very, very high level. But the public so far has been really adamant that they would like more green space. And so we've added, while keeping the parking spaces the same, we've added much more green space within the parking areas. And we don't know exactly what that will look like, but most likely the sediments will be able to drain into those green spaces, and then there'll be vegetation at the bottom and then upper level. And then there's also going to be the removal of the carousel building, which used to be in this site. And now we have positioned it over in the on the east side of the Sand Creek area. So that would be the southeast corner of the Bridge Street. So that is missing from this park concept now, which opens up opportunity for interpreting what the green space can be where the building was originally sited. And then the third big change that you'll see on here is the splash pad in the playground. We feel that through talking to people, it's best if we identified Traverse Park Centennial as a better location for a splash pad. And that is really the heart of the city from what I can tell in the community. And I've been there quite a bit almost every day, and people love it from all over the place. But really, the local Sandpoint residents really use that park a lot. So I think that that's a really great win-win for everybody to relocate that. Again, these are just concepts, and those are the kinds of things that when I hear from the public, not every every idea gets incorporated, but those were some easy ones. Oh, and here's the Sand Creek Downtown Waterfront one. And you can see where we relocated the carousel on that southeast corner. And then another really exciting one about this one. We were able to move ahead with the area behind the Panda.
Panda.
Panda Theater. I'm sorry. We've relocated. There was a building in there. We just took that out completely. And we made some some just general ideas of what it could be like if that was park space and green space. And then maybe there's a sculpture garden in there. Again, like I said, these are really just big conceptual ideas. And one thing that you might see is an extension of the boardwalk. That's called out as an expanded dock or deck for gatherings or a floating ice rink. So that stems from a lot of the feedback I heard from the public about the desire to have ice skating. And I have some wild and crazy ideas about a boardwalk that could possibly be pulled out from the other boardwalk in the winter and then put away. And anyway, these are really out of the box creative ideas. That's the kind of stuff that I'm hoping to hear from all of you and from the public. And I hope to see you tomorrow night, and if not, Friday at noon at the beach. And then next week, we're going to do a whole new round of these. We're kind of watching the weather right now, and we'll announce that later this week. All right, thank you.
Can you give us the time for tomorrow, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's from 5:30 to 8:00.
Thank you.
And it will be open house style. So people are anytime, and so there's going to be stations set up. So one on downtown waterfront, one on the beach, one on the sidewalks, and one on Traverse Centennial Great Northern or Sports Complex. So people can give feedback, ask questions, take it closer to these images.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Maeve.
Can I just make a comment? I just love your enthusiasm. I just want to tell you that I find myself getting very excited about things when you talk. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any announcements from council? Okay. This month of October is Idaho Healthcare Worker Appreciation Month. So I want to encourage all Idahoans. I want to recognize healthcare workers out there and thank them for their service, especially through this pandemic, of course, but particularly these last few months when it's getting ever harder. They've worked many months of extra long hours, and have really risked their lives for all of our benefits. So I thank them, and I encourage all Idahoans to seek out healthcare workers in their lives and communities and show their respect, appreciation, and support. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting this evening, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. This is not the time to speak on specific items on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on such an item, please wait until that item is announced during the regular meeting, and you can speak at that time. To accommodate both those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular meeting, if it's needed. Before we proceed with the public forum, I'd like to take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comment during Sandpoint City Council meetings, both during public forum and for other opportunities to speak during the meetings. Please note, if you're attending by Zoom, you'll need a working microphone. In order to participate, you'll need to use the raise your hand option if you would like to be called upon to speak. When your name is called, you'll see a prompt on your screen to unmute. You'll need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating in person, if you wish to speak, you'll need to complete a signup form located at the front of the room up here by the door and hand it to the city clerk here in the front. The forms, again, are available on the table back there by the door. In interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the mayor or council or staff, and do not approach the dais, please. If you have any materials for council, please hand them to the clerk in the front. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak during the public comment period? If so, again, please fill out a comment form in the front and hand it to the city clerk. If you're online, please raise your hand. The first speaker we have is Janine Shepherd. Good evening, Ms. Shepherd.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Just here to pray for you tonight, Janine Shepherd from Bonner County. If you, I would love it if you guys would join me in prayer. Almighty God, we come to you and we ask you for your blessing on this meeting today. Please give the mayor and council members wisdom for dealing with issues today and for decisions that will need to be made. Help their minds to be clear and their eyes to be fixed on you. We pray that you help the mayor and council members in their marriages, helping them be strong spouses and have vibrant marriages. Heal and make whole any broken relationships. Bless their families and help them to be strong parents. Help their kids be strong in you, Lord. And if there are any that are wandering, we ask that you bring them back. I pray that for everyone here. Give them good health and healing of anything that is out of alignment with your perfect will, Lord. Help their bodies to be healed and whole. I pray that all of us present here would have a deep longing for you, Lord, and that that your power and anointing would be upon us. For any that do not know you, I pray that you would show yourself to them in ways they cannot deny. Make yourself real to them. Ephesians 3:16 through 19 says, "I pray that out of his glorious riches he may strengthen you with power through his spirit in your inner being, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith." And I pray that you, being rooted and established in love, may have power together with all the Lord's holy people to grasp how wide and long and high and deep is the love of Christ and to know this love that surpasses knowledge, that you may be filled to the measure of all the fullness of God. We thank you, Lord. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd, for that prayer. Do we have another speaker, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. That concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. Now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,745,177.71, reflecting $796,172.61 for payroll and $949,005.10 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Right, seeing none, would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved?
So moved. Second.
That's been moved and seconded. This will be real call the.
Councilman Growth.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman.
Yes.
Councilman Sprow.
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule.
Yes.
Your consent calendar is approved. With no old business on the agenda, we'll move on to new business. The first item under new business this evening is a notification of the disinfection contact radio violation violation at the Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant on July 16, 2021. Water Treatment Supervisor Rich Boudet is here to provide an update on this notice of violation received from the Department of Environmental Quality. Rich, did I say your name right?
You did.
Okay, thank you. Please, floors yours.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for getting the water treatment part of that correct. As the mayor has stated, I'm here to give you an update on the violation received for Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. You and our customers all have a right to know what's going on with our water quality. July 16th, between 10:00 and 10:30, partially treated water was distributed from the treatment plant with zero chlorine for less than 30 minutes due to mechanical failures. This resulted in a violation of the Idaho Rules for Public Drinking Water Systems. The state was notified within 24 hours of the violation, and we received the official notification from the state that we were in violation on September 23rd for contact time violation. The next slide, please. Yeah, next slide, please. What you and the customers need to know is that this was not an emergency. This was a low-level violation. And our water system is safer because of it. We've identified issues within the water treatment system that attributed to this. And we have remedied those, and I'll touch base on those in another slide. The next slide, please. So here, I want to talk about who was affected or who potentially was affected. You can see the blue line in the middle of the map up towards the top. That is Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. The water flows down to Woodland Drive. And the next slide will kind of zoom in. It shows the round section right there is the reservoir. Right close to the Nick-Nick Trailhead is a T. So the water comes down the treatment plant, and it can either go into the reservoir or if demand is such, it can be consumed or it can be used. During this period of time, both water treatment plants, Lake Plant and Sand Creek were running, and the reservoir was gaining in level. So it is safe to say that all of the water that came through the treatment plant in the time of violation went into the reservoir. The water was mixed with other chlorinated water, and it accounted for about 3.07% of the overall total capacity or volume in that reservoir at that time. And if I do the math on chlorine residual, I can't really even measure it. I don't have instrumentation to measure down that low. It's really, there was no effect on chlorine residual. So we have done some additional improvements and safeguards at the treatment plant. We have worked with programmers to have new alarms put in place for several different issues. We've also set up automatic shutdowns. So if the water quality parameters aren't what there should be, then the water treatment plant will shut down. And this is going back to where I was saying earlier that we are safer because of these things. Sand Creek runs, it's usually like a Swiss clock. And so when we have issues, it's far and few between. We're really lucky that this was a low level violation. We're really lucky that operations staff was on top of it. We responded very quickly. And if it weren't for that, it could have been much worse. So again, go back to you have a right to know, and the customers have a right to know. And we are required on a tier-two level violation, we are required to notify all customers. So the water went potentially into the system near Sand Creek, but because our system is tied together, all customers have to be notified of the potential risk or the violation. So that will be the next step. Those will go out soon. And with that, I would open up to questions.
Council, any questions?
I have a question. So if it were a real emergency, some catastrophe, then how how would we be noticed? Because this happened in July, and now we're just, it's September.
No, it's a really good question, and I missed that bullet point in my notes. If it were an emergency, we would notify all of our customers within 24 hours. That's the rule. We would follow that.
To tell us to boil water?
Whatever, whatever would need to, whatever action would be needed, we would notify the public, our customers, and we would give you direction.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So my councilwoman to my right asked my question. So I'll advocate or at least make the statement of, is, once I read this, I was an alarmist. I was like, what's going on? And then as I read through and as I reached out and understood this better, I would agree with you that this showed us how to do things better. As scary as that moment was, this provided us an opportunity to do better as well as express this is the level of transparency that we do have for our users, our community, our constituents. So again, we often try to find that silver lining in a dark, dark cloud, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done.
Thank you. One more thing I would like to say with your time about transparency. I'd like to just put a plug in for our water quality report that we do annually. It's on the city's website. So anybody, you know, listening, anybody here can go to our website, and you can see the water quality results on the website.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is a presentation regarding the water and wastewater rate study, followed by council consideration of several related contracts. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide an update for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm actually. Report rather.
Sarah is going to be my other team member in this, but wanted to start out with some context and background, because you, as you can see, have multiple resolutions before you for consideration tonight. These are, this is related to our water treatment and our water rates, but also our wastewater treatment and our wastewater rates. And I wanted to start too with a little bit of update and background on the wastewater treatment facility. We have a story, and it is a section of our budget book, our electronic budget, particularly on the wastewater treatment facility. So this really kind of takes from that. But I wanted to ground us a little bit in this tonight, because our wastewater treatment is always a hot topic of discussion, especially when it's election time, because we've been talking about it for many years. And and we are now going to be moving forward with the project. As council will recall, there has been a decision made that we would move forward with a new wastewater treatment facility at our current location. And it will, we will move forward with this project as a progressive design-build project. So we've never done a design-build project here at the city of Sandpoint, but it's increasingly becoming an approach used by jurisdictions across the state as it can prove to be not only faster, but also more cost-effective, and we tend to see more innovation. So it's particularly becoming popular in communities as they're doing water treatment facilities and wastewater treatment facilities. And a reminder on our progress related to our wastewater treatment facility. We we received a new permit, our discharge permit, with some conditions in that in December of 2017. We have been working on upgrades to our facility, bridge upgrades, we call them, which kept us in compliance with our permit requirements and also improved the level of treatment at our facility to meet or exceed what is required in our permit. We have some existing bonds on our facility. I'm going to hand that over to Sarah here in a minute to go over again, what are the outstanding bonds on both the wastewater side as well as the water side? Because that's something we look at with this study, and that's also one of the resolutions you have before you for consideration. Now, our bonds on the wastewater side are especially important topic, because it's one of the reasons we made a decision, council made a decision back in 2017 to move forward with bridge upgrades. And we were going to hold off on construction of a new treatment plant until beginning in the year 2022, 2023, so that the current bonds on the wastewater treatment plant could be paid off first. And we weren't stacking debt upon debt for our ratepayers, because as it stands, the projections on costs for the treatment facility are substantial. In 2017, estimated to be between 50 and 70 million. And in today's dollars, it probably exceeds the $70 million mark. So again, significant costs associated with the facility. And the concern was the impacts on the ratepayers and a decision to pay off debt before we took on new debt. City Council back in 2017 had approved an initial facility plan that was Idaho DEQ. Again, we've done upgrades and going into 2019, where we replaced the boiler, some of our pumps in 2021, addressing some headworks projects, which are still in progress, and some interim backup equipment. And so in terms of, going to move us forward to current status and our timeline to specifically replace the existing wastewater treatment facility. Our plan, and as discussed and presented at previous meetings, was first, we need to start with a rate study. And the rate study would involve our wastewater side, but at the same time, we need to update our water rate study as well. And And that was targeted to occur in this twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Fiscal year. So that is one of the items before you tonight. Is a consulting agreement with FCS group for conducting that water and wastewater treatment study. And we have our representative from FCS with us tonight too. So she will also be giving you a presentation in a. In a few minutes. In addition to that, as I mentioned, we do have outstanding bonds. Our current bond for the wastewater treatment plant will be paid off in September of two thousand and twenty-two. We have some longer term bonds that with our water treatment plant. And there may be an opportunity to take advantage of lower interest rates and refinance those bonds for savings to. Rate payers. So another resolution that you have before you is. Item number eight B three, and that's a financial services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company. Those have been our financial consultants and you'll recall that we. Actually, one of our wastewater bond. And financing a few years ago for significant savings to our rate payers that put us in the position where we would be paying off debt. In two thousand and twenty-two and so that's who we worked with on that last refinance and that's who we'd propose. Working with not only related to. What will likely be a refinancing recommendation coming before you at. An upcoming council meeting. But doing the analysis for the current loans that we have and bonds and also being involved with then the rate study portion of things. We plan in two thousand and twenty-two, later in two thousand and twenty-two to engage a design builder. For our wastewater treatment plant. Just over the summer months, we had issued a request for letters of interest to kind of assess the market and do we have contractors. Out there that are, would be interested in design build and more importantly, would be interested in a design build project here in Sandpoint, our project specifically. We did receive affirmative responses from nine prime primes across the country. So there is significant interest that is out there. Some putting together proposals that involve really some pretty innovative partnerships. And so we'll be moving forward with next steps with that here in upcoming months and coming back to council for that. And we'll be moving forward with a preliminary engineering report and a further vetted facility design as part of that process. We expect that to be coming back to you. In its final version sometime in two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. And then moving through to construction from two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-eight. So. Again, under current status, things that we've been doing is we have had, we've been working on a demonstration project in South Sandpoint to. Aggressively tackle and try to assess the efficacy of reducing our inflow and infiltration. And if we could successfully reduce those, those flows, that means a smaller treatment plant for rate payers. So. That is a significant, important effort for us to undertake and you'll be getting a report actually at your next council meeting. On November third about that project, what happened over the summer and. And kind of when you can expect to see. Results of, of those efforts. Again, conducting our rate study. And that's before you tonight for consideration for that contract. Paying down and paying off our existing debt on our wastewater treatment plant. We have begun early discussions on looking at bonding options, meeting with local, state. And federal representatives for funding opportunities. Those efforts have been initially underway. Drafting procurement and contract documents, that initial work has been underway and. Then further public engagement and also industry involvement. So before you tonight, you also have under eight B two. A proposed resolution for an engagement letter with McAlune, Laura McAlune. From McAlune Law to serve as our bond counsel and provide services as needed through these processes. Laura has worked with the city over many years. She worked with us on our last refinancing that we did. She also was our bond counsel for our water treatment plant. So she's one of only a couple bond councils. Really specializing in this area in our region. And so she's familiar with our city attorneys as well. They're familiar with her, have worked with her in the past. So. That's why the recommendation to move forward with Laura. And with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to give you an update on our. Outstanding debt and, and bonds payoff periods. So you're grounded in that as we move forward with this discussion too.
Right. Good evening. In our, wanted to bring up a, this is actually a link in our budget book. So just in case you ever need to find it in the future, it is always out there. It is all the debt service schedule for the whole entire city. I'm going to scroll down to our enterprise funds. Wanted to point out that our wastewater revenue bond will be paid off in this fiscal year twenty-two. That is a very far left column there. And then the, there actually is four water bonds out. The nineteen ninety-seven one is actually two different bonds. It just rolled into one for purposes of the schedule. So these are the three bonds that we will be. Looking at to see if they are, if it's worth refunding and then also coming back to council with a proposal with different options to choose from. And other than that. There is about eighteen, I think with eighteen million left on the water bonds. And a little over seven, seven hundred and eighty thousand left on the sewer one that will be paid off this year.
And with that, I think we will. Next, turn it over to Angie Sanchez, who is with FCS group and she will walk you through a presentation of. Just what our, our rate studies would, would look like, what she's going to consider. What the timeline might look like. And I think it's important to note again. Because you'll, you'll see this reflected in Angie's, Angie's presentation. I want to remind council that. We have been having discussions also with. Cootney Pondure Sewer District about opportunities to consolidate. Treatment efforts and spread costs across rate payers and. They have been very productive conversations that we've been having over the last year, but one of the key considerations for. Both parties in those conversations is exactly what would that cost look like? So I think it's important to note going into this that. Angie is also currently conducting the rate study for Cootney Pondure Sewer District. So there's some benefits with her looking at both sides. And both entities and what that might look like and understanding. What both entities might consider because again, what would that cost? That really at the end of the day, I think with across both entities. In our discussions were at the point that yes, fundamentally, this probably makes sense as in the best interest of our rate payers most likely. It certainly could provide significant savings and it certainly is best for our environment. But cost always becomes the stumbling factor. So Angie will be working us through that, looking at both sides for both entities. I would also note that FCS group and Angie specifically has also been working with. In the past with the city of Hayden. You'll recall that there was a lawsuit a few years ago that went all the way up to the Supreme Court with city of Hayden relative to. How they had developed their rates and whether it was legal and the courts ultimately found. Not in the city's favor and they had to redo their rates. And so Andy's, Angie is very well versed. In the court findings in that regard and what is acceptable practices. So again, brings that experience to us. In taking a look at our rates across both of our plants. So with that, I'll hand it over to you, Angie, to fill in all of the gaps.
Great. Thank you very much and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Is my presentation up? Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And so just to kind of set the groundwork a little bit, my name is Angie Sanchez Vernosh and I'm with Financial Consulting Solutions Group. It's a consulting firm that specializes in the area, as Jennifer mentioned, in rates, cost of service, financial planning for utilities and, and FCS group has been in business and, and conducting these type of studies since nineteen eighty-eight. And we have offices in Redmond and, and Spokane, Washington, which I'm located in the Spokane office. As well as Lake Ofgo, Oregon and Boulder, Colorado. And so again, this is one of our specialties. We've been working with a number of jurisdictions throughout the, the mountains and, and western United States on. Rate studies such as this. The city has essentially solicited some information in terms of wanting to. Conduct a water and wastewater cost of service rate study and new user facility fee study. And so we're, we're going to talk a little bit about. The monthly rates, which are the, you know, the cost of service rate study as well as new connections connecting to the system. You know, what are those particular fees and what do they actually entail? And so this evening, you know, what we wanted to provide is a quick overview of the rate study process. And some of the key study components that are involved in the, in the rate study process as well as, you know, what type of timing, deliverables. And other items that the city would like to have included in the particular study, should you move forward with this particular effort. So why a rate study? I think that's probably why the first, the first question that a lot of entities ask and really it's important so that it enables each utility to remain self-sufficient. And, and really self-supporting. And so what these particular analyses will do is we'll evaluate each utility on a standalone basis. And identify really where are you today and what might your future look like? You know, what are the overall obligations that you have? What are the future upcoming capital needs that you may have? And how might you be able to support and develop a plan that will help you actually achieve those particular objectives while also being sensitive to customer impact? It also can inform financial decisions and their impact. So a lot of times you're not just going to necessarily have one decision to make. Many times we will need to run various different sensitivity analyses or alternatives analyses to help council really just be informed and, and. Feel equipped to make the appropriate decision for your particular community. And so that's what also a rate study can do. As mentioned previously, you know, capital, capital planning, capital projects can have a significant impact in terms of the financial obligations of each of these utilities. And so a rate study will develop a capital funding plan that will evaluate not only how to optimize your existing funding sources, but also. If there will be a need, potential need for external funding. So what level of loans or bonds. May be required if you're wanting to move forward and execute the plan, the capital plan that you had before you. It will also provide an equitable cost recovery from customers, what will be called equity evaluation. So not only identifying what are the overall needs of each utility, but identifying within the utilities, what customer classes do you serve? And are each of those customer groups paying their cost to provide service based on their demands and needs for, for, for service delivery? It can be a living plan and that's really what we at FCS group like to see it is that it's really an evolving plan that really should move and evolve with you as you go out over time. And so again, you're evaluating where you are today. But also looking out into the future so that you have a proactive plan to basically come back and, and measure yourself again. You know, are you holding to plan? Do there need to be, need mid-course corrections and why? And so it really just provides you the ability to be a bit more proactive in terms of the utility management that you have before you. And finally, really it's timing. It's, it's been over ten years since the city has last completed their rate studies. So many times what we say is. Rate studies usually typically conducted every, you know, three to five years. Again, just to make sure that your costs are aligned with your overall rate structures, that your. Needs are being met and your overall objectives and, and, and needs are also being met as well. In terms of the key study components, what we have here is kind of from left to right there. We do start with a project initiation data collection type of process to kind of kick the, the effort off. We then will go through a revenue requirement or financial plan development. And again, this is independent for each utility. Which defines the overall needs. And so again, you're looking at. Operating and maintenance type costs, take the capital infrastructure to debt service requirements. That defines the overall need. You will, will conduct a cost of service analysis, as we'd mentioned, really looking. Down and diving in a bit deeper to identify if each customer group is paying their equitable cost share for provide, for that service being provided. And then finally, rate design in terms of monthly user charges that identifies how are we going to collect the needed revenue? So once we know the amount that needs to be collected by each user group, how is that then collected or assessed to your customers? Is it through a fixed charge, a variable charge, et cetera? Those three analyses, the revenue requirement, cost of service, rate design, really do focus more on the monthly user charge that you assess. The new user facility fee update is more for new customers connecting to the system or those customers that may be expanding their particular service. Their particular service for water or wastewater. And so that's really more related to the new customers connecting to your system. Finally, we wrap it up with meetings, presentations and documentation. So throughout the project process, we'll be meeting with staff, with council. Throughout sharing results, gaining in input and feedback in order to come up with a solution that is, is, is right and makes sense to the community. For water and wastewater service. So now I'm going to dive down a little bit further into each of the key analytical areas and talk a little bit about what, what can you can expect from each of those areas. So the revenue requirement, financial plan and that is really again, defining the overall system need is, it's a multi-year financial plan. Generally will run about, you know, twenty-year timeframe with the focus for rate setting being more on the three to five-year timeframe. We look at determining revenue, then revenue necessary to meet all obligations. And so not only direct costs such as operating costs, capital and debt service. But we're also looking to identify if we're meeting our fiscal policy targets and metrics. So reserve levels are they said appropriately? Are we funding system reinvestment or depreciation funding? And are we adhering to debt service coverage requirements based on some of the lending that we might have outstanding? Key to the revenue requirement financial plan is the capital funding plan. And here again, because of the significant nature of the costs of, of capital cost for the utilities. We look to identify the annual capital needs based on, you know, what your overall various different facilities plans have identified. We will look at what existing resources you have and again, optimizing those existing resources. And then looking out to see if external funding is needed through loans or bonds. And then we'll have some discussions in terms of evaluating alternative capital considerations. So as, as previously mentioned, potentially looking at the option of regionalization. And also, you know, making sure that we're, we're trying to develop our plan so that we have rate stability. And so if we find that we're having peaks and valleys in our capital projects. Or is there any way for, to change timing, to change priority in order for us to stabilize our rates over time? But we're always having an eye towards maintaining ongoing system reliability, sustainability and integrity, which is. Do our rates have at some level, some funding for system reinvestment? As, as our, as our current customers are using the system, we also should have those particular rates be reinvesting in that particular system as well. Yeah, the overall, it will evaluate the sufficiency of current rates. So we do go in this, not assuming that we'll need a rate adjustment, but really wanting to look at evaluating the existing. Fin- financial capacity of each of the utilities. If we are not able to meet our overall obligations, that's when we will. Loot back and begin crafting an annual rate implementation strategy so that we can eventually. Figure out how to meet our long-term overall objectives. Again, balancing needs with overall impacted customers. The cost of service analysis is an equitable, equitable distribution of the cost to serve different customer rate crews. And so this is again, as we had mentioned, we kind of defined the size of the pie with revenue requirement. Now we're trying to slice the pie to determine what portion each customer grouping really should be paying of that particular pie. And again, here we're using industry standard methodologies. And so American Water Works Association and Water Environment Federation have methodologies that are generally accepted practices. In this particular area, but it really does look at city-specific information such as unique usage characteristics of your particular customer in your city. As well as the facility requirements that are required to provide service. What comes out of the cost of service analysis, again, will identify of the overall system cost. What portion of the total cost should be allocated to each customer class in order for them to be at their cost of service? It will also provide us some unit costs so that we're beginning to be able to gauge. How are our rate structures set up and designed and are they in alignment with how the overall costs are being incurred for those particular services? So that is what the cost of service will provide. Once we kind of know what that overall target is by customer class, we can then go into rate design. And rate design is extremely important because it's really our primary communication with our customers. That's, that's what they see on their bill. That's what they're trying to understand on their bill. And so here, here we talk a lot about how are our rate structures designed and making sure that they're recovering the target level of revenue. and making sure that they're recovering the target level of revenue. And here, we'll, again, look at industry trends and city current goals of what you're trying to accomplish. But essentially, rate design is the composition of the fixed and variable charges that we assess for water service and wastewater service. And we will go and look in detail to each of your customer classes. And we have them listed here kind of on the water utility classes and wastewater utility classes. Identify what kind of rate structures you currently have in place. Discuss if they're meeting your overall needs and if we need to make any type of adjustments in order to better align with your overall goals and objectives. But again, rate design is really how are you actually assessing your overall costs to your particular customers and are they in alignment with your overall goals? So, moving now to the particular fees that really are more related to new customers connecting to your system. And the city calls them new user facility fees, also known as capacity charges and a number of different terms. They are the one-time fees for new connections to the system. And so, they are not ongoing rates. They represent the value of the share of the system capacity that the new users will utilize. And that is really key in terms of the findings of the Supreme Court methodology back in 2015 for the NIDCA versus City of Hayden case. And so, there is a methodology that has been identified based on that particular case and findings. And so, what this particular update will do is ensure that we, the city is in compliance with that particular court ruling and that we are, again, basing these particular fees on that methodology. In a very 30,000-foot level, you can kind of see that methodology there. It's really identifying what is the replacement value of each of your system that is in the ground today in functioning and providing service. There's an allowance for various different adjustments, such as outstanding bond principal and unfunded depreciation to get you to a net system replacement value. We then compare that to the number of users the current system can support and ultimately will result in the new user facility fee for each of the particular utilities. But again, it's very different than ongoing rates here. This is really more of a capacity value. So, as new customers come in, they're taking a portion of the available capacity. It's really kind of reimbursing the city for the investment that has been made for that capacity that that new customer is now able to utilize. So, in terms of study deliverables and summary, you'll have an independent utility financial review of each of your utilities. Again, making sure that they have, are on a self-supporting basis. So, the overall cost of the utility should be covered by the individual fees that are assessed by that utility. We'll establish some fiscal policy targets and guidelines for you all, for your all consideration. Develop a capital funding plan. So, again, looking at optimizing existing resources and looking to see if additional external resources are required. A multi-year rate strategy that will include scenarios to review various all different alternatives. So, again, if we are potentially looking at a regionalization option on the wastewater side of things or other capital funding alternatives, you will have that available to you and delivered to you. Cost-based and equitable fees by customer grouping. So, again, an evaluation of if existing rates and the revenue generated are meeting overall cost to serve needs. Updated new user facility fees. And finally, I think which was extremely important and that has been beneficial and valuable to a number of our clients is you all will receive access to financial planning toolsets. And so, the city will be able to have essentially a rate plan that will be available to you to essentially kind of measure against as a bench line in terms of if you're meeting to plan as you move out in the future or if you have to make mid-course correction. It really just gives you an ability to understand why, you know, what were the overall assumptions that were made and why might there need to be some mid-course corrections, up or down? So, if you get, you know, more favorable lending terms, and that can be a positive thing. If capital projects come in higher, that might be some type of adjustment. But again, you'll have this toolset to be able to use at your disposal to help evaluate some of those particular impacts that you might be seeing. And in terms of schedule, what kind of, what level of effort does this particular project entail? So, preliminary project schedule, we kind of have outlined here is that it would kick off in the November timeframe after approval of the particular study proposal. We would then take January through March to do a lot of the technical analysis of the particular project. And then, April and May would be more of the workshops in terms of preliminary findings, coming back, incorporating those particular findings and refining them and to come into a final recommendation as well as documentation. Rates would then be effective June 1st of 2022. Now, the important piece here is you kind of see this little box to the right there that says January workshop on rate study fundamentals. Since it has been some time since the city has gone through a rate study process, we thought it might be a good idea to really engage with council at the beginning of the process to talk about the rate study process, really what's included, key variables, policy considerations, and allow time to really talk and discuss some of the issues and concerns that you all have for the particular rate study or what you would like to see addressed in the rate study before the technical analysis is developed too fully. So, again, making sure we do that at the beginning rather than the end. And so, that's kind of the particular timeframe. Obviously, it's flexible as we move forward, but this is kind of what we're looking at in terms of project schedule. And so, with that, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions that anyone may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I had a question. Thank you for that really thorough presentation. I just had one quick question on regionalization that you mentioned would, could be used to evaluate an alternative capital considerations. And Jennifer mentioned that the Cootenay-Pondare Sewer District is also going through this process as well. So, when you're looking at that piece, would you be looking at using the statistics from the Cootenay-Pondare Sewer District specifically in terms of like how many users they have now and how many they may have? Or is that more of a higher-level analysis that doesn't really take into account a specific entity?
Yes, excuse me. So, the alternative that we would consider in terms of regionalization would absolutely look at, you know, if that particular situation took place, you know, what are the total capital costs? But also, what would be the additional customers that would be included in this particular, particular new entity or regionalized entity? And how would that then spread out costs among a greater customer base? And so, yes, we would look into their customers as well.
Thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? Thank you for that presentation. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, someone on Zoom.
Okay.
Someone on Zoom would like to comment.
Great. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record and tell us whether or not you reside within the City of Sandpoint, please. And you'll have three minutes.
Hi there. Molly O'Reilly. Yes, I live in the City of Sandpoint. And when the city 10 years ago looked at whether to expand outside the city limits, the state law, the city attorney said then mandated that if the sewers moved outside the city limits, it was a utility and had to serve wherever it was wanted. City council decided that would induce sprawl potentially, and city ratepayers would pay for sprawl. I have no idea whether Idaho state law has changed. I have no idea whether it's being interpreted the same. I have no idea whether council cares at this point. But that is something more than just rates. I was part of building a workforce housing development park cottages. And we paid the same new user fees for studio apartments as we would have for three-bedroom, two-bathroom apartments. It seems to me there may be room for a little nuance. If somebody wants to build a 900-square-foot house with one bathroom, one bedroom, is that the same as a 3,000-foot square house? Then I would raise the question of whether Lighthouse Factory, given adequate sewer in Cootenay or Pondaree where taxes are very much lower, might move. So, that should be a policy consideration potentially. And then, I wonder a little bit about the same consultant for two sewer districts, one which maybe have a much greater sense of urgency about merging than the other. You have different realtors for sellers and buyers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Appreciate those questions and comments. Anyone else? Okay. I would, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the professional consultant services agreement with FCS Group for water and sewer cost of service rate study. Second. The move is seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, Ms. Mayor, what Mr. Riley said, do we have any more information about that? You know, what, I'm assuming that was Scott that she was talking about? Legal, Sandpoint legal.
I'll leave it to legal councils who will also respond. But I would note for council, we do serve water outside of our city boundaries. And it's not uncommon for a city to serve sewer outside of its boundary, primarily in the, in its area city impact and its ACI because utilities are one of the reasons, one of the ways in terms of growth that you bring growth within a city limit. Those are policy decisions on the sewer that have not come up to this date. And that will be something that I anticipate that council will be discussing moving forward. But I'm not aware, Andy, on anything that would, I don't know where.
Councilman, I'm not aware of the analysis that was conducted by prior council, but we'll take a look at it.
Just so the public knows. Thank you guys.
Sure.
And I just have a semantic question. Jennifer, on the report, because, you know, I read everything. On page 10, it switches from, I'm assuming that it still means city, but it, in the scope of work, it says owner. Is that, it means city, it means the same thing?
Correct. And I believe that that was reviewed. Andy, you reviewed the agreement as well.
Yeah.
Okay, because words matter. So, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And Amanda, maybe this is a question for you. Ms. Riley brought up the question of how those rates are applied to, say, one-bath, one-bed units versus multi-bath, multi-room units. I believe we have a formula that accounts for those subtle differences in size and scale of development now, both for rates, monthly rates, as well as new user hookup fees. Can you respond to that, please? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while Amanda's coming up here too, another thing I would note related to the scope of the rate study. One of the components in the rate study that Angie and FCS Group had originally presented to us was there was, it was an option of doing that equity analysis. And as we discussed that with them, that was our staff recommendation and that that be included as part of this overall study because that is one of the things as part of an equity analysis. What they're going to look at is our rates and how we're charging them and how it's structured and how it should be structured looking forward. Is there equity amongst the different ratepayers on both the net fees as well as the rates? So, you're looking at commercial versus residential, different sizes of residential in-city, out-of-city. So, that will be part of that equity analysis. And we specifically included that in this rate study to ensure that that happened.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I frankly don't have much to add to Jennifer's statement. I think she summarized the equity component really well. I would just note that I think Ms. O'Reilly brings up a really great point. We hear a lot from our users that, you know, we should take a look at the equity and how it's calculated. Our water rates currently are a little bit more straightforward than our sewer rates. Our sewer rates do exactly what you're referring to, where it gets into the weeds of how many beds and the type of structure and the type of use. So, it gets pretty complex. But I think Jennifer answered it really well, that we have an opportunity to take a closer look at that and find ways to move forward in a more equitable manner.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
That's right. I don't know if this is a question for Sarah or not. And I believe it was with the services agreement. And we were piggybacking off the Meridian study relative to how we're paying for, okay. Sure. Can you explain what exactly that means and how we got from a Meridian study that is a town of 100,000 people to ours? And so, we can just be clear with the taxpayers, what they're paying for and how we got to that.
Sure. So, piggybacking is a term that's used for cooperative contracts. Basically, the state of Idaho allows us to jump on a contract that was competitively bid. And this was competitively bid similar services to the City of Meridian last September with contract award in December. So, essentially, that allows us to use FCS Group and use that procurement process in contract.
So, then, how do we get from their rate to our rate?
The rate isn't really what is evaluated. That's not what is comparable. It's more the services that were being provided. So, City of Meridian procured for a water sewer rate study, which is essentially what we're doing. However, the fees won't necessarily be the same.
I would guess they would not be. So, I guess that's what I was trying to get to, is how our fee is calculated.
Yes, and that's based on the services that we need from them. So, really, the procurement part for the competitive bidding is for the services.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. It does. Mr. Mayor, so, thank you for asking that question. I think that the clarity was helpful. And I might be conflating a few other procurements. But this seems like a pretty viable option to get some of the work done that needs to get done because I think that we've had a couple of projects in the past that we haven't had any bidders or the bidding process was less than successful. So, I wanted to kind of understand for clarity, which, which projects or programs could we piggyback off of and which others are not qualifiable?
Well, honestly, pretty much just about, just about anything can be piggybacked off of. And I actually look for government contracts because, you know, a lot of times the pricing is better. I'm going to get a better rate if it's a government contract. So, I look through all of that. When we have like large construction contracts, that, that becomes much more difficult because that is based on price. And so, the services or the work would have to be really the same. When you're talking about services from a consultant, it's more of the services being provided. It's not, it's not based on the rate portion. But construction contracts, those are going to be harder to match. I use it a lot with commodities and goods as well as for services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sprow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Groot?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for engagement letter with McAlloan Law for Bond Counsel Services.
So moved. Second.
The move is seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sprow?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for financial services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So, be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sprow?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
And the resolution is approved. Next is consideration of the annual renewal of city employee health insurance policies and other employee benefits. And again, City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief this year in covering our benefits. You know, you usually get me for 20 to 30 minutes.
She said last time. She said last time.
I know I say it, but I'm. Now I say it, but I'm going to be very brief this year. What you have before you is a renewal of calendar year 2022 employee benefits. Our benefits offered to our employees at the city include the choice of three medical plans offered through Regions Blue Shield, dental coverage through Delta Dental of Idaho, life insurance, long-term disability coverage and voluntary vision coverage through LifeMap and Cobra Administration through RIN and Associates. Once again, this year, we worked with Taylor Insurance as our insurance broker. Autumn Porter with Taylor has done a fantastic job for us every year. And we have made some changes in our program over the last several years, which has resulted in significant cost savings to the city and our employees, particularly with the implementation of a choice of three medical plans. So it kind of stabilized utilization that we had going up significantly. So our employees can choose beyond a HSA plan, our traditional city plan and a buy-up plan that has some lower deductibles and options that some of our employees find preferable. Initially, on our medical side, Regions came to us and offered us a renewal and with a 1.45% increase. Autumn and I worked back and forth on this. And ultimately, Autumn was able to successfully negotiate a 2% decrease in our rates over the prior year, which you know rarely happens that you see rate decreases. But that's what we've included in our recommendation to council. And a note that that decrease then will be shared between the city and employees who are paying a portion of premiums for spouse or child or family coverage. So the city does cover 100% of the costs of the medical plans on both the HSA plan as well as the traditional plan city. I also want to remind council, I think of additional note. Last year, you'll recall, we negotiated a new refund endorsement to our insurance plan. And so if there is an overage of premiums paid over costs incurred and paid through the plan, the difference will be split and shared back between Regions and the city with 50-50 split between the two entities. So they will calculate that. Our plan year again runs from January through December. So they'll be calculating this probably next April, May. And any refund would come back to the city in July based on our utilization, which we were able to negotiate again moving forward, that we get utilization reports. So we can kind of track what's happening with our plans for any tweaks, designs of plans that we need to make to, to control costs as well as it puts us in a better negotiation position with our medical provider. Based on the utilization numbers to date, we are expecting a refund in the year 2022, a substantial refund if we can keep our utilization close to what it currently has been. And again, the recommendation to council, and this will come back in the spring, would be that we establish a line item, particularly for these dollars, that it would be a medical stabilization account. So in future years, when we have rate increases, significant rate increases, we could use that to stabilize what those impacts would be, not only for the city and taxpayers and our budget, but for our employees as well. So our recommendation to council is approval of our renewal contracts with Regions, Regions, Delta Dental, LifeMap and RIN and Associates.
Oh, short.
All right, thank you. Does council have any questions?
I've got a statement. Good job providing great benefits for our city employees. And thank you very much for using a local company, a local insurance company to broker this. So thank you very much.
I was going to say the same thing, but he said it better.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the renewal of city employee medical, dental, vision, life and long-term disability insurance, the employee assistance program, continuation of benefits, administration and other city employee benefits as presented. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? So be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Groot, yes. Councilwoman McAllister, yes. Councilwoman Sprow, yes. Councilwoman Rule, yes. Councilwoman Sherman, yes.
Motion passes. And the final item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-206-1F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Is there a motion?
They moved. Second.
They're moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman, yes. Councilwoman Rule, yes. Councilwoman Sprow, yes. Councilwoman McAllister, yes. Councilwoman Groot, yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Save the executive session. I want to thank all the members of the public who came to participate this evening and everyone not participating in the executive session. I invite to now, please exit the room. And the Zoom meeting will now end. Good night, everyone. Thank you.